Good evening. This is the June 1st, 2023 meeting of the Planning Board. So I would call the meeting to order. We're going to take, if anybody's looking at an agenda, we're going to take item two. We're going to take items three, four, and five out of order and place them before item The first thing I would call the board's attention to is we have a set of minutes for the Thursday, November 3rd, 2022 meeting. As everybody who was present at the meeting had an opportunity to review those meeting minutes.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Perna, you all set with the minutes?
Yeah.
Jay, you all set?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Then I would entertain a motion, and I am as well, but I would entertain a motion to approve the November 3rd, 2022 meeting minutes.
I move that we present the November 3rd, 2022 minutes as presented to the board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let the record reflect that was unanimous, three to zip. Okay. Now, do we have any bills this month, Mr. Goldrick?
We do.
Okay.
Where they went, I don't know. Oh, here they are. Wait a second.
Okay. Oh, I guess it's, one thing I would do is I would just welcome two new members. We have Julie Holstrom and Maurice DiPaolo, who are new members. I was remiss in doing that. I was...
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
And I'm sure that they will serve ably in the steps of Mr. Boulay and Mr. Jerry. And I'd also like to wish, thank Mr. Thomas for his years of service, because tonight is his last public hearing. Getting on to the bills. I have a bill for 240 Cherry Street Graves Engineering, a bill for 378 Main Street Graves Engineering, and a bill for GZA Geo-Environmental for 701 Boston Turnpike. And again, these bills are all paid by the applicant through their, the fees that they submit in conjunction with their applications. I'm going to recuse myself from 240 Cherry Street. So I would ask Perna, or Jay, if you could just entertain a motion to either approve or not approve the expenditures for 240 Cherry Street.
You can vote on these.
I move that we approve the expenditures as read by the chair, who has recused himself for 240 Cherry Street at $2,175.60, Graves Engineering for 378 Main Street, $2,195.20, and GZA Environmental for 701 Boston Turnpike, for $6,238.92, totaling $10,654.54.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pass unanimously. We all signed very quickly.
Next order of business is board member comments. Ms. Holstrom, as you're a new member, do you have any comments this month?
No, I don't. Thank you, though.
Mr. Rao?
No comments yet.
Mr. Thomas?
I would, do have some comments. I would just like to say thank you to everyone here on the board. I know two of you are new, but I know you personally, Steve and Perna, who I've served with for, Steve with seven years, Perna for three or four. I want to thank you guys for everything that we've all gone through, good and bad. I've learned a lot from you guys. And I want to thank town staff for everything that they have done. I've learned a lot. All the townspeople who come and visit us and see our meetings and put up with us. Thank you to everybody for that. And I will miss some of the things that goes on in this board. I will not miss others. And it's been a good run for seven years, and I'm glad to be done in some ways and not, but I thank everybody for everything they've done for me.
Great. Mr. DiPaolo, do you have any comments this month?
No, no comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Then, the next order of business is the reorganization of our board. We do it based on the town's fiscal year. In the light of the departure of Mr. Thomas, there is some added urgency to that. So I guess I would entertain a motion as to the reorganization of our board, as to who will serve as the chair, vice chair, and clerk. Is there a motion?
I would move that we would elect Mr. DiPaolo as chair, Mr. Rodolakis as vice chair, and Ms. Holstrom as the clerk.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So Mo, it's your ship.
Congratulations.
Okay. I know how to follow an agenda, but this might be a little rough, this meeting, so just bear with me. Okay. So the next order of business is to go into the meetings and hearings. Our next order of business is a meeting with Nellis Jamesbury for a de minimis site plan modification for a proposed hydrogen storage pad. Is there anybody here from Nellis Jamesbury?
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Jessie Markford. I'm with Plug Power. So we first submitted on the original site plan application in December of last year. And we came before this board, sounds like maybe just part of this board, in March of this year, on the 2nd of March. And then part of the site where the pad was proposed was within the waterfront area. So we also went before the Conservation Commission in March. We have since withdrawn the application from that commission and submitted, revised the location out of the waterfront area, and then resubmitted to this board for a de minimis change to our layout. We'll also be going before the Select Board on June 22nd. So this as a refresher to some and as a kind of brief walkthrough to others. This is Bodich Drive here, the entrance, and then the Lincoln Street entrance over here to the Nellis and Valmay site. The original location was up here, northeast corner, again, in that waterfront zone, which is right around the boundaries right here. And we're proposing to move it closer to the building within, it's kind of currently a compactor area. So this is a blow up. This lighter area here is the previous location. And again, we're moving it away from the side and rear property boundaries closer to the building here. This is an image from the north looking south towards the building. You can see the compactor there with some turning movements coming out of that compactor being respected. This is the site for the pad. So for the newer members, this is a hydrogen fuel pad. The forklifts that they use there will be, the batteries will be replaced with hydrogen based batteries. And then the tank that will fill the dispensers inside the building will be placed on a secure pad here, a concrete pad with fencing all around it. So this is a revised site plan. It actually shrunk just a little bit, a couple of feet in square footage, east to west. We are, because of the grade change you can see here onsite, we are putting a small retaining wall in here so that we're not impacting the compactor area. And I actually viewed them coming to remove and move out all the compactors to make sure there'll be no impacts to that, and there won't be. I'm open to any questions.
Okay. Any questions from members of the board?
What was the main reason you withdrew the CONCOM application? I mean, again, it was close to the water. Was it not going to be possible to build within that previous footprint?
We didn't see success in getting a variance for working within the waterfront area.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other permits you're going to need? Any other approvals?
There's a license that we'll need that we're going before the Select Board for.
That's just...
It's a fuel storage.
That's just for the storage, right?
Yeah.
Anything else? What about the fire department?
Fire department review through building permit. And there's state fire approval as well.
Okay. So you have to go to the state fire marshal also?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Anyone else?
I have no questions.
Yes.
No, I have no questions.
Oh.
Yeah, so other than the fire department review, they did express that they, you know, there's some adjustments that'll be made to the openings, but I agree that similar to us passing this before, that that'll be handled as part of that building permit process in their review. And again, the fire marshal's permit will need to be done. We have seen no issue with passing this as a de minimis contingent that, you know, those reviews go through. If there's any changes, they'll have to come back to the board. But I think that applicant has that understanding, so.
As there don't appear to be any issues, I guess that I would make a motion that the board find that the relocation of the pad is a de minimis change to the pre-existing site plan.
Yep. Subjected to the approval of the fire marshal.
Right.
Okay. Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Okay. All else and David signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So voted.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want the cord back over there?
Yeah, true. Good point. They see you no better than I do.
Yes, I know.
Okay.
Our next order of business is a new public hearing for a proposed wellness center for a site plan approval, St. John's Prep School of Worcester, 378 Main Street. Would the clerk read the advertisement?
Certainly. The Shrewsbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, May 4th, 2023, at 7:00 PM in the Selectman's Hearing Room at the Richard D. Carney Municipal Office Building, 100 Maple Ave, to hear the application of St. John's Preparatory School of Worcester for site plan approval to construct a new health and wellness center with gymnasium facilities as required by the Town of Shrewsbury zoning bylaw, Section 7 F3, as shown on plans entitled "St. John's High School Health and Wellness Center, 378 Main Street," in 36 sheets dated April 4th, 2023, prepared by Quinn Engineering of 579 Pleasant Street, Paxton, stamped by Kevin Quinn, P.E. The subject property is located at 378 Main Street and consists in whole or in part of Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 21 Plot 100000. A copy of the plans may be seen in the Department of Planning and Economic Development or on the Planning Board website.
Thank you. Okay. I'm sure everybody in the room knows, but this is a public hearing, so the way this hearing will go is the proponents will make their presentation, the board members will ask questions, and we'll have an exchange with the proponents, and then the public will have an opportunity to ask questions. So, good evening. Would you like to introduce yourselves and make your presentation?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Chris Senical. I'm a member of the Board of Trustees for St. John's High School, and I'm here for Alex Aguirre, the headmaster, who was unable to make it tonight for a family engagement. But I'm also the chairman of the Capitol Committee that's been working with the architects and the engineers to design this project and plan this project for the school. This is of our strategic mission that we have at St. John's. This is a key component for that. The wellness center and recreation center for our students is really something that's the schools have needed for quite some time. And we're very grateful for you guys hearing this plan tonight. With me this evening is Mr. Peter Hanley. He's with Justo Pope Frasier Architects. We also have Mr. Kevin Quinn, who I believe you know from Quinn Engineering. Also here is Mr. Eric Ring. He's our facilities manager. And we also have a student this evening that would like to, if it's okay with you, Mr. Chairman, just say a brief word before we open this up to Mr. Hanley.
Sure.
Thank you.
Sure.
I'd like to introduce Chris Senical. This is my son. He's a junior at the school.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm Chris Senical. I'm a junior at St. John's, and I'd like to speak on behalf of my current classmates and future classmates at St. John's and how this wellness center is going to benefit not only our physical health, but our mental health at St. John's. And although I'm not going to be able to experience it, I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name's Pete Hanley. I'm the architect with Justo Pope Frasier Architects. I'll just give you a broad brush stroke, quick introduction to the project. It's a roughly 50,000 square foot wellness and athletic center comprised of an indoor gymnasium sized for four multipurpose athletic courts. It also includes some locker rooms for competitive sports, as well as PE classes for high school and middle school students. There's strength and conditioning spaces or exercise rooms, and then some auxiliary storage and administrative spaces. The building is placed existing site on campus where there are currently four outdoor basketball courts. That site was selected. There were a few initial sites considered. The site was selected because the campus is largely bound on the north and the west by steep topography and wetlands. This site in particular is bound on the north end from the zoning offset from Main Street, as well as, there's a zoning offset on the south side from a jog in the property boundary here. This is that offset boundary. The building was carefully designed to comply with the Shrewsbury zoning regulations, as well as the requirements of St. John's program, and there are financial constraints, of course. The east of the building site, so the site slopes from a low point here at the road to a high point of these existing tennis courts. So the building is actually recessed into the hillside. It's going to help mitigate the mass, the visual look of the building, as does the actual design of the building. You can see over the gymnasium, there's a large sloped roof, and then we have a series of stepped down roofs with locker rooms and storage area here, and then again, a lower roof on this long west corridor. And that's again designed to help break up the mass, the visual appearance of the building. And I think with that covers our sort of broad strokes placement of the building and concept design. I can hand it over to Kevin, and he can talk a bit more detail about the specifics of the site design.
Mr. Chairman, Kevin Quinn with Quinn Engineering. I'm here on behalf of St. John's High School. My office prepared the site plans for the wellness center. This project plan is presented to you in two phases. Phase one, phase one consists of improvements in the campus road. This is an internal road to the campus, but that's projected for this summer. And essentially, the idea is to get all the utility work, sewer, water, and drainage resolved in the street. And of particular importance, currently, power comes in overhead. And with that plan, overhead power and communications will be buried, will be put underground. It's a big improvement for that. The idea of this being that this road is essential to the operation of the school, this summer will be the summer to get that road squared away for the construction. Summer of 2024, phase two would be the construction of the building itself, the heavy lifting. But once this road has been resolved, the campus can move ahead and operate, and the building construction itself can proceed from there. As Pete said, the building right now is, it's located over existing basketball courts. They're an impervious surface. Stormwater runoff from the basketball courts drains toward Main Street in kind of an uncontrolled fashion. Proposed building, proposed plans will collect all the water from the roof and from other impervious areas onsite. We'll collect it, we'll treat it, we'll recharge it, and we'll detain it in accordance with Mass Stormwater Management Policy, and introduce it back into the drainage system in a controlled fashion. So from a town standpoint, it's an improvement in the drainage itself. The entrances to the building are on the north side and the south side. The south side entrance is an accessible entrance for handicapped persons. So the site plan calls for an accessible route from that entrance out to handicapped accessible parking spaces as well, again, in conformance with ADA and Massachusetts Architectural Access Board standards, if you will. There's a lighting plan we've submitted to you that shows that lighting on the site at the perimeter is zero. And essentially, the lighting is contained within the site. They're downward facing lighting to ensure that we control the spill, if you will, of the light onto adjoining courses. There's a landscaping plan which is in this set. Landscaping, let me get the plan here. Landscaping consists of five, I'm sorry, I don't have it here, five maple trees in the front of the building, five maple trees in the rear, and some low growth vegetation. Currently, along Main Street, there's a vegetated boundary which we will leave. And it's actually a pretty good screen from vehicles on Main Street seeing into the campus. So, but we are proposing additional trees just to ensure that we get good screening. Can I answer questions?
I just have a quick question. You mentioned treating the stormwater, the water from the roof.
Yes, sir.
In accordance with the stormwater policy. What, specifically what kind of treatment may you be providing here, other than kind of, I don't know?
Good question.
Yeah.
The stormwater standards Massachusetts require that we remove from paved surfaces, that we remove 80% of total suspended solids. And the suspended solids are the mechanism that brings pollutants into groundwater. So by capsing solids, we remove the mechanism that brings pollutants to the water. For this site, for this site here, because we're space confined, we have a treatment system. It's a mechanized means of removing the solids from the stormwater. The good thing is that the roof itself is considered clean runoff, so we're able to recharge roof water to the groundwater untreated, under the Massachusetts Stormwater Management Policy for that, for recharge. So roof water is able to be recharged, so we're able to take advantage of that. We've called for underground chambers to be installed for treatment and detention, detention of stormwater and recharge. And if the budget doesn't permit that, we have an alternate plan that will allow for a small basin to be constructed. It's less expensive, but we'd like to keep as much green space as we can.
You don't have any major parking lot overflow into this area, right?
We don't. This plan actually, we lose some parking with this plan, but St. John's fortunately has an abundance of parking capacity. So the loss of space that we have, the school does not feel it'll impact their needs of parking.
Thank you.
Mr. Thomas?
I was under the impression that this is where the existing gymnasium was, is.
It's right across the road.
Yeah, all right. So now you have the backside of the gymnasium where the road runs in the back, then you have the two parking lots that are tiered behind there.
Correct.
Is it behind that?
It's between the tiered parking and Main Street.
Okay.
There's actually basketball courts, fenced basketball courts, and up above there's tennis courts.
Okay, so, I, okay, now I understand. I thought it was where the gymnasium was. That's why I was confused about how they were going to do a tiered, a phased system. My second question is, so what is this building going to contain compared to what the gymnasium contains? Because it sounds like the gymnasium.
So the gymnasium holds the competition basketball court?
Yep.
Single wood floor competition court. This is a practice court, so it's a multipurpose facility. It's not for competition basketball. So it's a rubber floor. It's going to be used for basketball practice, tennis practice, volleyball practice, indoor track, although it's not a competition track, but warm up and running, as well as PE classes for both high school and middle school. Chris?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, if I may, address the comment, the question. This facility, the most important part of our strategic plan was to construct a facility that's for every student in the school. So this is not a high level varsity only athletic training facility. This is a facility where you can have intramural programs after school. Yes, track students can practice indoors on the indoor track when it's inclement weather outside. Yes, the wrestling team can practice indoors in certain areas of the facility, but the size of this facility with the four multiple courts, we can actually have a practice going on on one side, and we can have intramural sports going on another side. And it really engages every student from seventh to 12th grade after school and even before school. And it still allows us to have our main gym, which we call Coach's Pavilion, for all of our main basketball events. And varsity practice will still be in that facility for basketball, for instance, during the wintertime. But this is just an additional facility for every student to get an experience for their health and wellbeing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
No, I was concerned about the parking, but now I understand, I thought I was going to replace the tennis courts and overlap into the parking lot.
The tiered rear parking, right?
Yes. That's not where it's going to go.
If I, if I may, Mr. Chairman, just on the parking, this new facility is going to butt right up to the edge of the existing parking on the middle tier of that parking lot. That's the widest parking. You have the roadway, then the middle level, that's nice and wide. This building is literally going to butt right up to it. So the south facing, I don't know if you have a south facing, yeah, right there. So that's south, see the lower picture on that plan right there? Thank you, Kevin. That is the south facing, where we're going to have a two-story weight training and physical fitness area right there, and that parking lot butts right up to that. So we don't lose any of those spaces. The spaces that we did lose, as Mr. Quinn talked about, was along the roadway, coming up along the back there. There's like about, I don't know, 15, 20 spaces there. And those, right now, the utility poles where they stand just beyond that parking are actually in the way of the building. And so those, that's the phase one relocation that we're talking about, we'd like to do this summer, get that out of the way, and we would lose some of those parking. But again, we have an abundance of parking, and there's plenty of spaces right now, even just before the seniors graduated, there's still plenty of parking spaces there, so we don't feel it's an issue whatsoever. Thank you.
Mr. Quinn, I have a couple of questions for you.
One related to the stormwater. Where is the proposed location in the event that you're not able to use the mechanism, the stormwater catchment? Where is your basin located?
Right now, we call for a series of chambers, gallery of chambers here.
Mm-hmm.
The basin will be right in that location. It is in the plan set. It's often in the plan set, but the basin will be located in this little triangular area there.
Okay. And the other question is related to traffic flow in terms of using that roadway that runs in between the gymnasium and the new building. Is that going to be, continue to be a two-way, you know, operational both ways?
Yes.
Or has there been any thought of making it one-way circulatory through the entire campus?
Well, we talked a little bit with St. John's about that. They've indicated satisfaction with the traffic pattern right now. Our feeling was, I want to fix it as a broker. If I could, Mr. Chairman, just also help address that question. We did discuss this internally as a committee and with the administration. And right now, as the, we use that back entrance for the middle school drop off in the mornings. And so right now, it's not a legal one-way, but in the morning, it's a one-way traffic flow. And that's our heaviest flow early in the morning, as parents are dropping their students off. But in the afternoon, you know, with students hopefully being in a facility like this, it spreads out the traffic flow on the back end of the day, and that hopefully will help alleviate some traffic concerns, where the two, having the two-way traffic there will not be an issue. But it is something that we will monitor personally, and as the safety of the kids are paramount with us, we are prepared to take any initiative we need to make sure that that's taken care of. So just want you to know. Thank you.
That's good to know. Thank you.
As a parent of a former student, you know, my thought was always that that access should be, that secondary means of access should be right turn only. You know, I always told my son, don't try to take a left onto Main Streets during the afternoon or heading down the field. Take a right, go around, go. But that's, that's my thought. My only other comment would be locker rooms. And again, I'm not trying to delve into the Capitol Plan, but it seemed to me that the field, we need to, there's a need for some locker rooms down the field, because most of the teams are, you know, head behind the restroom or head over to the other side of the field.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I'd love to answer that question. So as part of this strategic plan, we do have, and I would just like to speak somewhat privately here. We don't want to really make this too public. I know this is a public forum, but there is a future
Don't say it.
But there is a future phase to have a field house down at the field. So if any of you are familiar with that field down below, and we just finished up, actually. We just went to the second area of grass there. So finally, that project will be closed out from doing all the site renovations and the new turf fields. But as you drive into that field down there now, you'll notice there's a grass area right behind the away bleachers. And that was designed for a future building. And we have budgeted that. It was actually, we actually, we know the situation that we need a place for students down at the field. There is the old dungeon underneath the home stands there. But we just felt that this wellness center, to build a facility like that right now would just be not really feared of all the students, so to speak, and not, quite honestly, just not appropriate to. We felt this facility was most important, but it is, it is on the plans in the long term. Thank you. And also, one of the traditions we actually talked about, we had a lot of feedback from students as well as coaches, that they really liked the fact that the students, you know, for a football game or soccer game, they have to walk down together in solidarity down that hill to the field. And that's why, so we're putting all new locker rooms, varsity locker rooms in this facility to keep that tradition going. And again, the existing area where the lockers are now in the weight training, one key component I'd just like to add to this, and it speaks to the regard of where this facility was located. Where that entrance is, is we also have part of this plan, okay? And it's not on the site plan because we're going to internally renovate a portion of Cornell Hall. Now, that would be handled through the Building Department because it's just within the confines of that building. We're not doing anything to the exterior or any site plan improvements or that. But the wellness portion of this, our campus ministry, our student guidance, and all the guidance councils we have, we're going to create a new student life hub in that old area. So if you're familiar with the school and you've been in there, right behind the cafeteria area, that's going to actually open right up to the back entrance. And it's going to create a whole new student vibrant life hub. And that is really one of the most key components of this project. The physical aspect and the sporting aspect is great. We all know how fun that is. But this student life hub, that's going to be where the existing lockers, showers and bathrooms and weightlifting areas really creates a whole new vibrant space for the school. And that's a key component to this master plan. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
I have a couple. Maybe I'm missing it in the plans, but do you have a site plan that shows a little bit more than just right around that building?
Sure. Actually, the second page, I believe, shows the overall campus. I'm sorry, it's the architectural, the second page of the engineering. Yes, C 1.0 gives you, again, it gives you, it's still localized to that area, but it shows you the existing conditions where the basketball courts are, Cornell Hall is, and Main Street. That would be C sheet, C 1.0 of your set.
That's existing conditions.
Yes, that's the existing condition.
You have one showing the wider area.
The next, C 1.1, again, it's existing conditions, but it shows you the overall campus.
I got C 1.0, C 1.1, 1.2.
1.1, well, C 1.1 is in, should be in your plan set right after C 1.
I have.
No, didn't make it to mine.
Nope.
Well, I'll make sure you this. I can bring you this plan if it's helpful.
You don't have to bring it up there.
That is the architect.
Yeah, we don't have that one.
Correct.
It was on the drive.
Thank you.
I apologize if we didn't get a plan set.
That's all right.
That's the point.
Okay. So can we get a hard copy of that? Not tonight. Okay, that helps. Okay. So the driveways, is, I know you're going to work on that road. Is that driveway existing the way?
It is.
That's the way, the driveway itself's not changing?
Not really, not substantially.
Are any of the driveways closing up, the one further up the hill?
Nothing is being closed off. Right now, the traffic pattern, this is, these are the basketball courts
Right.
the building will be. So this is the entrance there. It circulates around, and there's two other ways out.
All right, so the one further up the hill is still going to be open? Yeah.
Yep.
Right? That's got that little, you've got that little U in front of the existing building?
Yes, that's, that's a little U right there, yes.
Okay.
That will remain.
So that's existing conditions, right?
Correct.
Okay. And where is the new building going? Just don't flip it, just, it's going right there?
Yes.
Okay. And fifteen spaces in that area are going to go away?
Yeah, there's actually, you can see on this plan, there's a rack of parking along there. That's all going to be eliminated within the building.
Okay.
Twenty spaces.
So somewhere in here, are the, I realize they're basketball courts, but are the parking calculations for that building somewhere in this set?
The parking complies with zoning overall, a campus parking.
I understand that, but are there calcs for that building?
No.
You didn't do any calcs for the building?
No, because it's a campus-wide. This building, that's a good question, that brings up a good point. This building is a service to the existing population. This building will not generate new educational areas. Students who, other students who exist who are going to campus will be using this.
Right.
But it's not going to be creating classroom space for new students.
Okay. So in the existing building, and that gymnasium, that gets used for public functions? That building's never going to be used for public functions?
Well, I wouldn't say that. But I will say that in a campus environment, our obligation with zoning is to generate parking that complies with campus-wide.
Right.
So parking for this building, someone could be parking elsewhere on campus. But the number of spaces provided is provided in accordance with the bylaw.
For the whole site?
For the site-wide, yes. And actually, and I'll go one step further. It's actually significantly more than required because St. John's has operated for so long. They know their needs, and they have created parking to accommodate their requirements. So it more than suffices in comparison to the zoning bylaw.
And if I may, Mr. Chairman,
Okay.
I think this building will abut the second largest parking lot on-site, if I'm not mistaken. Like directly about the second largest parking lot. That's in the back of the building that if you go up, it's very rarely used anyways.
Okay.
But for the most part, students or persons who are in the school are not going to drive here just to go to the building, just to go to this. For the most part, this is going to be used by students who are on campus to begin with.
And if there's an event, it'd be after-school hours or outside of school hours.
Or would be in, it would be there instead of the gymnasium, I would think, instead of having it.
Yes.
You'd, I don't, I shouldn't speak, but I'm just saying, I'm thinking out loud that if an activity was in the gymnasium before, it may be moved to this new facility now and not in the old gymnasium. Am I correct by saying that?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, yes, you're correct in saying that. For instance, we have a gala once a year, as you're all aware of. We hold that now presently in our gymnasium. We may hold it up in this area, but it's still the same gala, same, same.
I'm just thinking of a bar of unintended consequences, you know? You don't think about it, and then later on, something happens. And so the student population is not going to change. So it's not going to affect the traffic in and out in the morning and the afternoons.
Well, the student population will not be affected by this hall.
Right, right.
The student population
May change, but not by the
Yes, enrollment may change. It is a school that's had some growth.
Correct. And if I may, Mr. Chairman, to your point, we're hoping that this facility alleviates the afternoon traffic flow because kids will be there longer, and it spreads out the release time over a couple hours rather than a heavy hit right at the bell. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, I'm good.
One of the Catholic Conference needs first-class facilities.
So I just wanted to mention to that point on the parking. That was one of our comments in the staff comment letter, was looking for the overall campus parking table. I do know that our building inspector likes to have that on the plans for reference. I agree that there is likely an abundance of parking, but just showing that breakdown from the uses.
This is Dover stuff, though. This is Dover amendments stuff, though.
Correct.
Educational use, so.
And then
We're somewhat constrained and
I was wondering when that word was going to come up during the year.
I didn't see that.
And then the other comment, and I apologize if I missed this on the revised plans, but was from Water and Sewer, looking for the separated fire and water service lines, so. But those are very minor changes.
Yep.
Do you have anything?
Those were updated. Yeah, they were. Those were updated, the separate lines, yep. We updated those.
Do you have anything, any comments on that before?
No, and then the only thing, I believe this is the intention, but the existing trees in those medians and the U, are those intended to remain?
The existing trees along Main Street, yeah.
Yeah, so there's the U shape here, and then this somewhat landscaped path.
If I may, up the roadway, so you're talking about on Main Street, is that correct?
Yes, I don't know. So there's the existing trees here, and then this large
Yeah, no, nothing in that area.
Yeah, no.
No.
Okay. Is there anybody in your audience that has any questions or comments on this? Okay. Continue this till
Yeah, so we could either continue the public hearing, or if the board thinks that sufficient information has been had, we can close the public hearing and deliberate on a decision later. We did receive peer review comments back, and those have been addressed.
We don't have a draft decision, right?
No, we do not have a draft decision.
We're going to have to wait till next month anyhow.
Okay. Can you continue or I'll close it?
Yeah, you can do both in the same meeting. There's no harm in
Was there anything you wanted to accomplish, but we don't have a draft decision ready anyhow in terms of the site work or?
Yes, we, school does end on June 12th. So we were hoping to get started on that Phase One that Mr. Quinn described along the roadway. And that would be the gas, the water, and the electrical communication utilities. So prior to July, we were hoping to start that, Mr. Chairman, yes.
But if you close it, you're not going to be able to make any changes. That's going to be it. And you're going to have to wait for the decision anyways.
Yeah, we don't have a draft decision this month anyway, so we wouldn't be able to vote. And if we close it, then you wouldn't be able to make any changes between now and next month anyways. So it would make the most sense, correct, to leave it open until next month?
I think, I just, do you have your site contractor lined up, ready to go?
Yes, we do. Law and construction.
So there's also a 20-day appeal period?
There's going to be one either way.
Yep.
They can proceed at their own risk with the plan approval.
Correct.
Yeah, I don't see any way around it, unfortunately.
But the purpose of this Phase One work now is, you know, if we start this facility next June when the students are out, that's when we want to hit the site work on the foundation and excavation and all that. And doing both at the same time, all the contractors, like, would be impossible to rework the roadway, the access you need to, you know, to have the trucks and the equipment coming in and do that site work at the same time. So we were trying to get ahead of it for this year, that's all.
You still got the appeal period, no matter what. You guys want to take the chance and go at your own risk, you can
But they don't have an approval yet.
Right, right. We can approve it, you still have to wait.
Sure, I understand.
You don't have a decision, you're not going to have a decision for a few weeks.
When would that
There's no wetlands on site, nothing prevents them from
They don't have to go anyplace else, right?
Nothing, if sewer water is all set, nothing prevents them from
We have the permits for that.
From doing that, waiting
What I could suggest is that you could start the building permit application. Obviously, planning will not sign off, most departments will not sign off, but that'll give staff enough time to start a review at least. You know, we'll still wait for the board's approval, but that way you'll be set to break ground as soon as those are granted. The building permit phase can take some time, so.
Understood. We are planning, and our architects are working on having those plans ready for the middle of June, to submit those within two to three weeks from right now. But we were hoping that this just being a site work issue, not really a building permit issue, so to speak, that we would be able to get started on this phase, just, because this utility relocation work, we could do at any time, whether we were building the building or not, so to speak, you know, right? So that was the, that was the approach we were taking.
Yes.
But the location of the road isn't moving.
No, no, not at all. That road and all that, that existing parking that will go away ultimately, remains.
So if you coordinated with DPW, you know, proceeding along, assuming that you're going to get your permit and you
I mean, that's a good point.
Utility work.
I don't, frankly, I don't think Phase One is actually, that does not, that's not the threshold for site plan.
No.
So you can do the Phase One work
Right.
in the absence of the site plan.
Right.
Right, because you're not changing anything with the roadway.
We're not changing anything with the roadway. All that park, we're just cutting up the trench down the roadway and repaving it for this next school year.
Right.
So it's going to remain as-is.
So I don't see why you couldn't start your work now without, I guess, an approval from us?
You know, you're
Yeah, I mean, I want to be careful not to speak for the Building Department, but
Obviously, it's at their risk.
But I mean, the work we're doing right now, the utility work, is not even such a state building code. A building project is a separate animal, that's another.
So your building permit is just for your utility work? It's not for structure, so.
Yep.
Yeah.
People be pulling, having to pull an electrical permit?
Right, exactly.
But not a building permit, so to speak?
Exactly.
And, you know, the gas and the water guys will have to pull their local permits too. But those are just mechanical permits, they are not building permits. And just like that, we can go down and get those every day, and they issue those in a couple of days, right? So that's the way we were approaching that. We've engaged Selco, they have been, you know, they've priced out the project, designed the project to relocate these things, and Verizon, and all the communication companies.
I think we should wait and close it and have the decision next meeting, and they can start
Whatever they want to do with someone.
Do a driveway, you can do whatever you want on it.
Thank you, I'm glad to hear that, because that's kind of the approach we take. We didn't want to, you know, be
I don't think you have to wait
disrespectful, but
You don't need a building permit or anything to do that. A site plan approval, you're working in, you're working your driveway.
Just relocating your existing utilities underground. It's pretty straightforward, that portion, Phase One.
In the meantime, we can, we, Chris can start drafting a decision, and we can get whatever other information that we need, so. All right, then.
It's not going to affect that work.
No. I move that we continue the public hearing on the site plan approval for the proposed wellness center at St. John's. It's not St. John's Preparatory School, it's St. John's School. It's not a preparatory school, is it?
It's not, no.
Preparatory school is in
St. John's High School, but now we added, St. John's High School and Middle School.
Yes, okay. Until, was it July 6th? 2023 at 7:00 PM.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, if I may say, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so we're, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll see you after four.
I have a conflict for the next
Okay. Next order of business is a public hearing with Ed Muntz with 30 Floral Street, site plan approval on proposed parking site plan. Mr. Muntz, would you like to come forward?
Legal notice.
Yeah, I know, I get it.
Yeah, you didn't ask him to read the legal notice.
I didn't, did I not read the notice? I got it down.
Oh, I didn't hear you say, can you read the notice?
Ms. Solzrem, would you read the notice, please?
Certainly, the Shrews Replanting Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, May 4th, 2023, at 7:00 PM in the Selectman's Hearing Room at the Richard D. Carney Municipal Office Building, 100 Maple Ave, to hear the application of Ed Muntz, 10 Grove Meadow Lane, Shrews, Massachusetts, for site plan approval parking lot only, to review current parking configuration as required by the Town of Shrews zoning bylaws, Section 7 F3, as shown on plans entitled "Plan Showing Existing Parking in One Sheet Dated May 31st, 2022, Prepared by Jarvis Land Survey, 29 Grafton Circle, Shrews, Mass., stamped by Kevin Jarvis, PLS." The subject property is located at 30 Floral Street and consists in whole or in part of Shrews Reassessor's Tax Plate, 29 Plot 069000 and Plot 69001. A copy of the plans may be seen in the Department of Planning and Economic Development or on the Planning Board website.
Okay, thank you. Okay, good evening.
Yes, I'm Ed Muntz. I am the trustee of MDM Realty Trust, the owner of 30 and 26 Floral Street, the land that the school is located on. Uh, the school's been open and in operation for 19 years this year. And as the years went by, changes were made. We did an addition, what, maybe five years ago?
Yes, um, in 2019.
19? Yeah, four years ago. Um, and anyhow, we've worked with the building department on any changes we've made through the school. We now have a further change. I have some, some, it was a mixed-use property for a long time. I have some residential space on the second floor. Uh, we've given up some of that over the years, and now I'm looking to give up a little bit more. And we have the okay from the, uh, the State Access Board and so forth to put two more classrooms on that level. Uh, and where, where we're duplicating services that are offered that are handicap accessible, we asked for and were granted a variance to be able to operate two more classrooms. So when we approached the building department, Patty Shan, who handles this area, requested, I guess this is a year ago, that we have never really updated our site plan with the planning board. And it was always my understanding, after the initial site plan review and approval, that, uh, the, our obligation was to make sure, whatever changes we made, we had the minimum spaces required by the bylaws of the town. So Patty requested, and we did, bring in Jarvis surveying to lay out exactly what, where we stood on our parking, parking spots, and what our needs, based on the bylaws, which involve a couple in terms of student population and employees and so on and so forth, a formula is used that we would need so many, require so many spaces. Uh, as it turns out, with the change that we're looking to make now, uh, based on this study done by Jarvis, we, um, with the changes, we would be required to have 35 spaces, and we currently have 37. So we have had this plan done. We've submitted to the planning board, um, because this reflects the changes over 19 years that we have made, but formally introduces the plan to the planning board for site approval, which is what the building inspector was looking for. So here we are.
If I may, I'm Melissa Cole. I'm Ed's daughter, and I run the preschool, so I should be able to answer any questions you have about the parking, because I do do the day-to-day. I do wanna say I didn't bring a student with me to vouch for this program because they pass their bedtime. If they were here, they would tell you that they love our extra parking, because it dramatically increases their chalk drawing opportunities, and it has doubled our play space for both sprinkler time and bubble dance parties.
If I may interrupt you. There are two separate companies operating there. The school is separate from the real estate. I own the real estate. I have nothing to do with the school. My children, under MDM Educational Services, Inc., uh, own and operate the school. I'm the landlord, she's the tenant.
It's a lot of fun.
Especially at Christmas.
So the, the spaces exist now?
Yes, yes.
These have been on the ground?
Yes.
Yes.
When I used to pick up my grandkids, these were here.
These are here.
Okay.
We added them in 2020. The, the biggest addition was during the mandated shutdown. Um, I was home without a whole lot to do and, and panicking, so I figured we could at least maybe add a little bit of parking for our, our families for when we came back, because I knew they would be shifting the way that we did drop off and pickup. I did not know at that time that I had to submit a formal plan. We just kinda put it in, so that was my, my error.
Basically, we were encouraged initially, every few years, we have the, the.
Recirculate it, yeah.
The paved surface, seal-coated, and then it requires having it restriped.
Right.
And over the years, we've, we've used the same contractor for both, all these years. They said, look, you have a lot of space here to add striping. That's just not being used. So as the years went on, and it's been many now, all of these spots popped up on what was our original paving surface area.
Yep.
So we did not, uh, the only real change we made, because of a grade issue, uh, we changed our traffic flow, so you now need to travel east past the school to what was our second. Was an exit is now an entrance. And we haven't changed the fact that all the traffic comes in and circles the whole property.
Right.
And then exits. But the way that Melissa has made the change, in the wintertime, should it be a little slippery, they're going downhill and not trying to come uphill with the reverse plan. So that's where we're at.
Does anybody have any questions?
I don't have any questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, okay.
No questions?
So just for clarification, so on the east side is where the parents come in, right?
That's correct.
And you drive around the building.
Right.
And then come up the other side and.
Yes.
Go out, one of those other.
One of the two exits.
There's, yeah, there's two ways there.
We had done it the other way for years, and one of our parents is a, um, works for Homeland Security and does traffic flow at major events, and he was the one that suggested shifting the flow of it. Because of the grading of the hills, it's, it's less steep going that way, so that's why we switched it. And he was right, it works much better.
Okay, so nothing else has changed?
No.
No.
Okay. Do you really use that space on the east that says one space?
Uh, if we need to. Not usually.
I can get by there?
You can.
Yes.
Depending on the vehicle, um, that's coming in. So everybody can, um, everybody can come in, everybody can get around it. We don't have always the most successful parkers. We have a lot of parents who are new to driving, so we prefer to have them not use that space, because very often in parking, they're not quite in the lines, and that can cause an obstruction. But when you park appropriately within the lines, you're totally fine.
I, my own experience in and out of there, it seldom ever used, but even if I were to eliminate it, I still have one more spot than I'm required to have under all the ordinances to open these two new classrooms.
Okay. Um, Mr. McGirt, do you have any comments or questions?
Yeah, so we did issue a comment letter, um, and it's more just some revisions to the plans that we were looking for. We were looking for the handicap spaces to be added. I believe there are existing, but they're not shown on the plan.
It is shown.
I, I actually mailed it over and I have copies as well of the, updated with the handicap more, more, like, clearly marked.
Yes, I'm looking at it.
Once you hand them out, you can't get them back.
I don't need it.
Looks like my plan has that.
Thank you.
Are they marked?
Yeah.
Have they painted? Are they marked?
Yeah.
It's the same.
It's the one.
Yeah.
Yep.
Isn't it?
One space?
Two spaces.
Two spaces.
Uh, it's.
Oh, I see, okay. No, it's the same thing I got.
Same plan.
Yeah.
Oh, is it? Okay.
Yes.
I only mailed it.
No, we have the revised one.
It's good on the town. I only sent that at like 2:30 this afternoon.
And you're required to only have two spaces?
One.
You're only required for one?
Mm-hmm.
And you have two?
Well, we have two side-by-side that we do not use. Um, only one is marked handicap right now, but we can mark both of them. They're the right size, but we don't have it, because we haven't needed it. But we don't have that, like, staff doesn't park in that spot. It's just open.
I know what's parked in there.
Okay.
Anything else?
Oh, I believe that was mainly it. I do see that the nine by 18 is included, the stall dimensions, as a note. I would just confirm that, so all of the stalls are, sorry, nine feet by 18 feet?
You, um, we surveyed, so.
Yeah.
Yep.
That's what it says.
Okay. Um, and then there was some concern expressed from the building department in terms of site circulation.
As terms of what?
Uh, site circulation, so the concern being these spaces here, the six spaces on this corner, um, that vehicles entering or exiting there, you have cars backing up into there. Um, what we're looking for is some kind of a narrative of the circulation and how that works.
That's a one.
Everything is going way in the school.
Right, but in terms of the, the cars pulling out and backing in, uh, or pulling in and backing out during traffic flows as well as employee parking, just to provide that circulation and, um.
Sure.
Do I like verbally tell or I need to write it down?
Sorry?
Like, to verbally answer now, or do you need it, like, written for you?
Uh, written, please.
Okay, we can do that.
Yep.
Uh, 19 years operating and we haven't had an issue with cars piling up on the street. The only time we have people who are parking out on the street is on grandparents' Day, or Mother's Day, or Father's Day, when all of a sudden everyone's got 10 relatives that came. But beyond that, in the normal operating capacity, uh, it, it's very smooth.
We've actually moved a lot of our parent and family events to the afternoon, so we can utilize Floral Street School parking, and the parents will walk from there, unless we have, you know, a grandparent that needs closer access. They can park on-site. But usually, they're coming from Floral Street School after school hours.
Yep, that's not the question, right? The question is, if people are parking in those spaces, can they back out when people are exiting those sites? Is that what the question was?
Right, so the, the concern is that there's a conflict, so if there's cars entering and someone's backing out, um, someone's made that turn from Floral Street into the site.
They can't turn in there.
They don't go in that way.
It's one way.
Or, or exiting, sorry. So if they're exiting from the site and people are backing out, again, it's, it's this curved parking area with.
Right.
Spaces. And the concern is that people backing out may not be able to interact with cars going in and out of that entrance.
Okay, I can, I can write up a narrative about how it is working? Is that on?
I think that would, I think that would assist. That's what the building inspector's looking for, just to understand the circulation and how the cars interact in terms of the parked cars, and then cars dropping off kids and, and that.
That is.
I understand it's working, but providing the narrative will allow us, in terms of enforcement, in terms of discussion.
Oh, it's functioning.
Um, this is not something we typically do. I'm, I'm a pretty big Candyland player, so I just wanna make sure I know what, what it is that you're looking for exactly, so that, that you're getting what you need.
You could, you could call and speak to Chris, uh, you know, tomorrow, whatever.
Get some details. That'd be great. Thank you.
I'm off tomorrow, but.
No. Monday. You have another month to go, so Monday you can do it.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Anything else?
I have no questions.
So can we close this, or we need to continue?
Um, given that, I'd like to have that narrative of the circulation, I'd request the board keep it open. Similarly, we can draft the decision and.
Yeah, I know, she has time to put in the paperwork that she needs.
Right, okay. Um, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody you'd like to be heard on this? Okay, could I have a motion to continue till July 6th?
I move that we continue the proposed site plan approval for 30 Floral Street, new public hearing to our July 6th, 2023 meeting at 7:00 PM.
Second.
Second? Okay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? So, yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next order of business is a, um, public hearing of Polito Development Corp., proposed parking, um, area of, um, site plan approval. Uh, Ms. Holstrom, will you read the legal notice for that hearing at 240 Cherry Street?
Certainly. The Shrewsbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, May 4th, 2023, at 7:00 PM in the Selectman's Hearing Room at the Richard D. Carney Municipal Office Building, 100 Maple Ave, to hear the application of Polito Development Corporation, 587C Hartford Turnpike, Shrewsbury, Mass., for site plan approval parking lot only, to construct parking facility as required by the Town of Shrewsbury zoning bylaw, Section 7 F3, as shown on plans entitled "Proposed Parking Plan" in 11 sheets dated October 31st, 2022, prepared by Quinn Engineering, 579 Pleasant Street, Paxton, Mass., stamped by Kevin Quinn, P.E. The subject property is located at 240 Cherry Street and consists in whole or in part of Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate, 48 Plot 026000. A copy of the plans may be seen in the Department of Planning and Economic Development or on the Planning Board website.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Quinn?
Mr. Chairman, Kevin Quinn, Quinn Engineering, on behalf of Polito Development Corp. Um, we've applied for site plan review before the planning board for this proposed parking area at this, at the site. My office prepared plans for this parking area to serve the building at 240 Cherry Street. This parking area is not proposed in relation to any need under zoning. The need for this parking is determined because my, my client's tenant has had success. His business is growing, and he needs additional parking to accommodate his business. So, um, why we're here is a successful business, which is kind of a good thing, in, in my estimation. The plan's proposed parking areas, it was 60 spaces total, in two phases. Each with 30 spaces. About, about half of this parking area is Phase One, and then Phase Two is an additional 30 spaces. The entire stormwater collection system is located in Phase One, and it will suffice for both phases. So the entire stormwater system is constructed under Phase One. And then the Phase Two, when Phase Two is constructed, it, it, that additional load will go directly into that stormwater system. The system was designed in accordance with the stormwater measurement policy. We have a basin there. Um, we, we achieve treatment and recharge. And the outflow from the system goes into the street system within the Hills Farm Industrial Park. So there's no surface discharge from that stormwater system itself. Plan includes a walkway along what would be the north side of the building with a new entrance, so that persons parking in this parking lot are able to access building direct. There's no need to walk around. They'll have a direct entrance right there. Um, site lighting is proposed here. We, the plan's called for five wall packs along what would be the west side of the building, um, evenly spaced. There is a, a, a photometric plan provided in the package that shows that the, the lighting is limited in the area to what's impacted.
Okay.
Any answer questions?
Anything else?
Sorry?
Anything, anything else?
I think of, uh.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
Just a quick clarification question. You mentioned new entrances on the north side. Would that be just internal, um, entrance, or would that be going to Route 20 or Cherry Street?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. The entrance, I'm sorry, the entrance I'm talking about is the entrance to the building.
Okay.
See, most of this building is occupied on the, on the other side. So by putting parking on this side, we had to open a doorway.
Okay.
Just, just so that people who park here have a direct access. They wouldn't have to walk around.
Thank you.
Okay, questions?
Yeah.
I have a question. So this is for what? Employee parking? Is that what it's for?
It is, um, but we wouldn't, I wouldn't wanna limit it to that. Um, it is for employees. The, the, the tenant of this building is staffing up, and he needs significantly more parking for his employees. That's what drives it.
Okay. Okay.
I have no questions.
No questions?
Good.
No questions.
Mr. McGirt?
Yeah, so I apologize. We haven't had a, issued a comment letter from the staff end for this. Um, we did send this out for peer review, and we have received that back. Um, and, uh, for lack of a better term, got a clean bill of health largely from that. Um, I do see that we've had revised plans that were submitted yesterday, um, which will go out for Graves' review. Uh, what would have been included in our comment letter is looking for vegetative buffering to be added along the Cherry Street. Actually, let me put the plans up. Additional vegetative buffering added to the Cherry Street side of the parking um, in hopes of, uh, you know, using evergreens in order to help buffer residential butters across the street, on Cherry Street. Um, and then, um, you know, discussing the lighting today. Uh, Mo, you had sent me that, uh, lighting from Arizona.
Oh, yeah.
Using, I know, we do have the dark sky compliant, um, but I would encourage lessening the height of any parking-related, um, uh, lighting utilities. What that does is that does really cut down on glare while still providing the lighting to parking sites. Um, some of the taller ones, we have had issues with it glaring into a budding property. So those would be the two comments that would be in our comment letter, um, or will, and I apologize for not having that out sooner.
No problem. Mr. Chairman, um, in response to Chris's comment, we, we'd be willing to propose a row of abavide along Cherry Street, um, between the parking area. along Cherry Street, um, between the parking area and Cherry Street right at the top of the grade. Um, that would certainly give good, more cover than exists currently, more visual buffer than exists currently. And I would note that, um, this part of Cherry Street is about fifteen feet higher than the parking area here.
Right.
So a row of trees would give a pretty good visual buffer.
If it, if it's put up, if it's put up close to the street.
Yeah, right, exactly. It would need to be right, right at the, at the street line, which is what we're suggesting.
Anything else, Chris?
Uh, that would be it.
Okay, it's a public hearing, is there anybody who'd like to be heard on this?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I'm Chris Lund, uh, I live at two thirty Cherry Street. We're the residential abouter that's being referenced in the hearing this, this evening. And, uh, I'm grateful to hear the, the direction of, of adding vegetation. Uh, we'd like to further our concerns based on previous lessons learned with the project just a year before this with the same plan. So I wanted to kind of go into, um, our request as far as on the plan set that was proposed for parking. What was noticeably different on this plan set than the one we received on two thirty Cherry Street is that the parking's not defined. Fleet parking, customer parking, um, it's all a zoning bylaw requirement for office. Um, if I'm not mistaken, space for all company vehicles, space for visitors, and loading space for all deliveries and shipping is a, uh, bylaw listed requirement. So we'd be looking for that to be defined. We're not viewing this as a standalone parking lot, because this is addressing concerns with the whole facility and utilizes numbers, I'm guessing, from the main parking lot that's all a part of it. So how did we come up with sixty more parking spots? There, nothing's listed on the plan, there's no parking table, there's no, nothing defined as far as, as another example. We have one, two, three, four, five handicap spots denoted. That's math at, from the Massachusetts Architectural Access Board as far as those requirements. And it's all based on occupant law or, or a, a portion of parking. How did we come up with all five parking spots? I'd further say that this is not a plan based on just, we had a really great couple of years since we moved in. This is actually, uh, part and parcel with a building permit that was issued. And Mr. McGoldrick's predecessor allowed them to start and do a whole entire building permit, I believe, without any type of site plan approval. If you look at the, uh, if you go to the cover page on that plan set, if you could. What was noticeable to me, go up a little higher, the date October thirty-first, is when that plan set was started. The project that was built there started in September. The certificate of occupancy for that project was issued December second. Yet halfway through construction, I'm already working on a site plan to get approved. That is for sure in conjunction with that alteration. Alteration involved, according to the building permit record, office renovations, which include two offices, enclosing a mezzanine, removing office walls, and adding a wall to create a break room. So how is that all accounted for in the overall parking plan for this property? We'd like that defined. That was one of the issues with the previous project is we don't have clear definition, black and white, of what this parking all is for the whole building. Secondly, your sheet index, there is no photometric plan listed. That was a plan set we, we got received from the town. So I don't have a photometric.
Yeah, so the, uh, the revised plans were provided, uh, just yesterday.
We requested that, that plan set yesterday, and it's not here under review. So I'd ask for continuums on that item as well, so that we can have an opportunity to look at the photometric. We are on board for sure with that earlier comment of the lights being lowered. I want to show you an example of what we see from our yard to where this is being proposed. So I'm standing in my yard, that's the building. This big grass plot is where the parking's being proposed. And as you can see, there is no, nothing defined as far as a buffer between our home and what's being proposed with the parking. And not only would we be looking for it to be defi- uh, listed, but we want it defined. The buffer strip shall be planted with grass, low shrubs, and shade trees with a minimum two-inch caliper, with one tree planted for every fifty feet of road frontage. We also want to show you that two thirty, in conjunction with those trees, the attempt here was to have a fence, and they put those slats in those, those chain lights to try to cover the headlights. We'd be looking for that to be continued right across, as well as that vegetation defined in the landscape plan, which, again, there are no sheets listed on this plan set that list the landscape plan. You can imagine, you know, our biggest concern, learning from two thirty Cherry Street is the fact that we had vehicles coming and going, and, uh, we have lights that when they, you can see if you go back to the plan set on two forty, the, uh, everybody's coming in and all their headlights point right at our house. And we're, uh, currently in discussions with the, with the town over those concerns from lessons learned just a year prior to this. So, covered, what is this parking for? Because, uh, again, in two thirty Cherry Street, Mr. Quinn had defined it. I, I know it's hard to see from back here, but the loading area was called out. This is where the parking was for those company vehicles. This is, uh, where the parking wa- handicap spots and where the parking was for their employees. We're looking for that same minimum standard followed, so that we have an ability to communicate, if need be, after this plan is done, about how that parking's supposed to be used. Covered the photometric, I covered the landscaping, not in the plan that was available to us for review tonight. Covered the existing issues and the fact that many of these items are defined in the bylaws, and we're looking for those definite, those defined items to be called out specifically on plan, so we know that we're getting the minimum set of standards that were written into our local law. So I'm receiving the same benefit that any other town resident gets. That's all.
Hi, and I'm Jennifer Lund, I'm Chris's, uh, wife. I just, one other thing I would just note here is the, just making sure we have confirmation that the use will not create.
Excuse me, you're, you're Mrs. Lund, right?
I'm Mrs. Lund.
Okay.
Jennifer.
Jennifer.
I just want to get it through.
Yes, thank you, thank you, I appreciate it. Um, you know, another item here that's required for plan approval is just confirmation that the use will not create a nuisance of, of noise, um, and traffic generated. So, uh, my husband Chris had mentioned the lights, but we do have an issue, as we mentioned, with two thirty Cherry Street, where we have, you know, trucks coming in and beeping and, uh, people talking. So that idea of what is the use of that property, or that parking, and when it will be used is really important to us, because we do have issues with being woken up, you know, several times during the week at two thirty, three, four thirty in the morning from two thirty Cherry. We just want to make sure that, that, that condition doesn't get worse as we're trying to get that one resolved.
Yeah, like, a lesson learned, and we already looked for it, and we saw that it wasn't here, but they put the, um, dumpster right down at this end closest to our house. So in other words, um, this is just a G I S map. This is our house here, this is where the dumpster went, and it's about a hundred feet. And guess what, they emptied that dumpster at four o'clock in the morning every Thursday. And it's like unbelievable.
That's the other building though, right?
Correct, so when we looked at this parking, we were very sensitive to that, and we're thankful. We don't see any kind of dumpster or anything down here. But what we also know is that sunrun, part of the reason why they're doing this added parking on top of the existing parking is the fact that there's a ton of box trucks that leave in the morning. Imagine them load up the crews, the panels, the racks, that are all going to go out because they sell photovoltaic solar for roof. So those crews, and you can also imagine construction, you're, you're out the door early in the morning, you're heading out. Well, if this is all box trucks lined up, and they're going to head out at seven in the morning, we're going to have a huge problem with that. If those trucks are over here in the front where they are now, and this is employee parking for staff in the office, it seems like a much better fit for the neighborhood, so that we're not dealing with that until, you know, people coming in until normal hours, seven A M. in the morning type stuff, or later. So, that's what we're looking for in a, in a plan set. So, and, uh, Mr. Quinn's absolutely right, we're elevated. So taller trees, ground cover below that, right where their headlights are going to be, huge. Thank you.
Okay, um, Mr. Quinn? On the north side of the building.
Yes.
Are there loading doors?
I'm sorry?
Are there loading doors?
On, on the south side.
No, on the north side.
No, no, there's a personnel door, there's a person door.
Okay.
It's a, for persons to enter.
So there's no.
All, all their operation is over here, and.
There's no loading on the north side of the building.
That's correct. Secondly, um.
And in the first phase, is the door going on that side?
Yes.
On the first phase?
Yes. Yep, you can't have, you can't have his employees having to walk all the way around the building to get access.
Which, if, if I may, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Mr. Lund, what?
Um, a building permit's required for another means of egress into that facility. But it begs the question, why are we adding another means of egress into that facility? And where, where is that egress going now?
Well, they, they can't have a door on that side of the building if they're going to have a parking lot?
My question is why is that door going in for handicap accessible parking? Is it for a cu- a new customer space?
Mr. Chair, all due respect, means of egress is a matter for the building departments outside the scope of this board.
Yeah, so the point being is, is this tied to more work that's going to be done with the, with the bill? That's why I'm asking, not asking this board to get involved in.
Yeah, any, any future work would be, would need additional approval by this board. And so again, it's out of, outside of the scope of, of the proposal of what the board is reviewing for tonight.
Yep.
Well, I think it's a fair question, because this building required site plan approval when the last bit of, uh, renovation went underway in September for the bylaws, and it didn't. So we're asking it this time, because again, we want to be clear, is this part of another renovation, or is this because of existing conditions created? I think it's a fair question, given how it went with, with permit C dash twenty-two seventy-two.
Okay, what, hold on a second, what, Mr. Quinn?
Yeah, um, I can't address whether this tenant is going to make changes to the interior of the building. They may, that's their privilege, and they will go to.
Right.
The building department. The, as far as accessing that access door, um, it's strictly so that people who use this parking lot to park are able to get into the building in a direct fashion.
Right.
It's not, um, resonant.
But that, that's a building department issue.
It is a building department. Also, a cou- couple of brief things.
Sure.
My office did not prepare the photometric plan, but it was submitted in the initial package that we submitted. Um, it was done by an, an outside group, so it's not part of the site plan, but it is in the package.
Do we have it, Chris? Well, if we do, can we?
Yeah.
Can we get it to the Lund's?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep. And as far as parking and loading goes, the, the, the building has an approved parking plan. This plan here is to augment the available parking on, to this, for this building. Um, it's not the intent that this be used for anything other than employee parking, but the, the, this need not be further defined, because the loading area is already defined, was defined when two forty got a parking, got a, a building from it.
Yep.
They had to have parking in accordance with the bylaw at that time, and they submitted that, and.
Mr. Chairman, can I give just a comment on that?
Yes, through what? I'm sorry, what?
That, just a comment related to that would be, you know, something has changed in the building to require additional parking, because we do have photos of, um, after this change was made without kind of that planning site approval, um, additional cars on the streetway, grass. Something has changed, so I do think taking a look at the full parking requirements based on the, the use of the building and what's driving the additional need is a, a really key point to understand, you know, what's driving, you know, how many more employees or space, or what's driving these additional requirements. Taking into account both the existing parking and the new parking, I just think now we have to take, look at both and understand the use of the building and how this parking is supporting that.
Okay, I, I think, but, we're not going to solve these questions tonight. I think what would be helpful, i- if you could write your questions down and send them in to Mr. Lund, and we can forward them to Mr. Quinn and his client. And, and planning can review them, and your client can respond to them, so we can, we can get those down and try to get answers to them that way, because we're not going to, we're not going to obviously resolve this tonight, because we're not going to, we're not going to be able to get the answers. I think that, that's the best way to do it.
Yeah, and we, and we still have peer review to, to review again.
Right, and then, and if you could get the photometric plan?
Yeah, I'll forward the photometric plan and the revised plans that were provided to the Lund's as well.
Thank you, sir, I really appreciate it.
Okay, I, yeah, it's the best way to do it.
Yeah, we're totally great, thank you.
Um, and we'll go from there, right? What do you think?
Yeah, they're, they're running in circles right now, so.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. You have any questions?
No questions from the chairman.
Okay, okay, is there anything, is there anything else, Mr. Lund?
No, all set, thank you.
Okay.
All set, appreciate it.
Mr. Quinn?
Well, all set, sir.
Mr. McGoldrick?
Nothing further.
Okay, okay, so, um, it, it is a public hearing, is there anybody who'd like to be heard on this? No? Okay, then we'll continue this hearing until July sixth.
I move that we continue the site plan approval for Polito Development Corp., two forty Cherry Street, uh, until, uh, July sixth, twenty twenty-three, at seven P M.
Second.
Second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, are you voted? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very helpful.
Next order of business is, uh, let me get my brain going, four forty Hartford Turnpike, continued public hearing, for Shrewsbury Land Property Owner LLC, weird, weird name. Um, proposed warehouse and distribution facility site plan approval. Um, we have a request to withdraw the project.
Yep.
Anybody here?
Uh, yeah, so, um, Mr. Chair, the, this, uh, project was proposed, the board has, um, reviewed it, quite a few times earlier, um, last year. Um, it's been continued pending some, uh, review, um, which has been completed. Um, unfortunately, um, due to the board membership, we're no longer able to establish a quorum on this. The request is to, uh, have a withdrawal without prejudice, um, to waive, uh, application fees for a reapplication, and to allow the record to be, um, uh, submitted as, or incorporated into the new, uh, application.
I have a conflict on this too, but I've already been out in the hall.
Okay.
Not going to vote on it, so I'm not getting up again.
Yeah, that's all right. Okay, so that's it?
Yeah, so, uh, so the board would have to, to vote, um, to accept the withdrawal without prejudice and, um, waiver of fees.
And then you'd just reapply?
Yeah, they'll, they'll just reapply, it's procedural, and then they'll be, uh, starting with a fresh board.
Okay, any, any questions or comments?
A quick question, when they reapply, then they don't need to pay the fee, right?
That's the request, and so that's what we're asking the board explicitly waive that requirement, um, for them to reapply.
As part of the current application, did they already, did the application already go through the peer review process?
Yeah, so, um, they paid the peer review and the application fees. Yeah, so they paid the peer review and the application fees. So that's why we're asking that they not have to pay that again.
And they just got caught and just made a change in the board.
Yeah, it's not their fault.
Okay, so you have a motion to that effect?
I move that we, um, allow withdrawal without prejudice and waive the application fees for Shusebury Land Property Owner LLC, four forty Hartford Turnpike.
When they reapply?
Yeah, when they reapply, there will be no application fees.
Second.
Second, okay, motion is second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so voted. Okay, onto new business. Next thing is to discuss and vote on a partial release of a lot for, is it a lot or lots for Falcon Farm subdivision?
Yep, so, so this request is for a, a release of lots for the Falcon Farms subdivision. I did speak with engineering and get a status on this project. They have provided the applicant with a bond calculation for the remaining work. The one caveat to that is it's based on the pavement being brought up to binder. My understanding is that is scheduled for either tomorrow or Monday. But if the board is willing to grant the partial lot release for that subdivision, we would request that it be made contingent to payment of the bond and the subdivision road being brought up to binder.
Okay.
Mister Chair, the applicant is hearing, yes?
One second, how many lots?
Uh, it's eight in total, the model home has been released previously.
All the lots then?
Are we requesting, I believe it was all of them, right?
And this, uh?
Yes, Mr. Chair, uh, my name is Rashid Sheikh, I'm representing Falcon Farms. And I wanted to give you a little update on the project quickly if you have time, if not, I understand.
Real quick, I mean, I think everybody knows this project, even I know it and I haven't been on the board.
Oh, no, I'm just.
I watched these meetings, believe it or not.
No, I, no, not what's the project, but where we are on the project.
Okay.
But, but, you know, that's fine if you guys are aware. I mean, I took some pictures, so I'll just make it very quick that we have completed, you know, all the utility work, all, everything is done. The drainage is all complete. So now we are at the point where we were, we were going to have just the, you know, pavement. And, you know, I talked to Mr. McColdrick last month, but he advised me, he let just wait and finalize a couple of things left. Unfortunately, our payment delayed a little bit because as you know, that every material coming in is, is delayed. But I, we have also another project and we're making sure we put all the, you know, force in this project to complete this quickly so that, you know, we don't leave projects in, in, in the way, even though nowadays, you know, the interest rate and the banking situation, people are losing all kind of finances and, and you know, what's that going on? And I also, unfortunately, the labor is tight. So the reason I would like to get some lot releases is because we want to keep, we want to keep building and we want to keep the crew we have. Unfortunately, we have a gap, a month gap is a big gap, then we will lose the crew and we lose the momentum. And, and I'm afraid that would be a situation no good for anybody. So we have a great momentum here, we did, you know, work pretty fast. And we are, you know, just trying to pave this within a day or two. And honestly, I'm here to request release, you know, all, if not all, then, then few lots is leaves to get going.
Okay, so what does engineering say?
So engineering is comfortable with a release of the lots for construction contingent that the bond be paid and the road be brought up to binder, although the utilities are in, we still do want the binder course. And my understanding on that is for emergency vehicle access while the construction is being done.
So we, we release the remainder of the lots, are you okay with that?
I, no, but for two reasons.
Yep.
Number one, we'll release the lots from the covenant if the, if surety is in place. That's the way we operate.
Yeah.
Or if construction's been completed, but it hasn't. What is the number that, that engineer, has engineering come up with a number as to?
Yes.
What the bond would be?
Yes.
So, Mr. Chair, we are talking about conditional that we will pay, I'm, I'm willing to pay the bond like ASAP. The problem was that the bond was just computed, I haven't even seen. So it's no big deal to get a bond, it's a third party bond, which is, you know, we, we have no problem paying. And the second condition, Mr. McColdrick is talking about, that you are already putting the condition for payment, don't, don't. So we, I'm willing to take the both conditions.
Okay, so we, we'd release the lots from the covenant contingent on you posting the bond and the amount that engineering is.
Correct.
And bringing it up to binder coat. Now, how about the other issue of, is a pending appeal as to the calculation of the affordable house?
That's with the lawyers and whatever the, you know, lawyers decide that I was told that is not, you know, impacting any, you know, planning board decisions or the lottery leaves or anything.
Well, if you're going to build a, if you're going to build a house that, a market rate house, you're going to go out and ask for a building permit to build a market rate house and we lose the affordable lot, I, I think it is, is, it is an issue for the planning.
So, Mr. Chair, if you feel more comfortable keeping one lot because there was one lot which you guys were looking at, keep that lot, don't release all eight, release seven.
Wasn't there two, wasn't the issue with one or two?
No, it was, it was a mistake, you, you guys were saying one, anyway. If you want to release six, I don't want to make it, you know, it's, it's one, but.
To release six lots contingent on you posting the bond and bringing the road up to the binder?
I will be here next month and month after to talk about the other two lots.
Yeah, so the model home lot has already been released, so I, just not to split hairs, but five, yes. And the bond, and the bond amount that was provided from the engineering department yesterday is two hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars.
How much is it?
Two hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars.
For the whole thing?
Uh, for the, for the roadway, for the entire.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, there are total nine lots, not eight. Eight are left to release, one that was released months ago, which was a model home, which we have almost completed, but we still can't sell because you had this condition of.
Yeah, so it's a nine lot subdivision?
Yes, sir, correct.
Okay, so we, we'll release six more lots contingent on him posting the bond and bringing the pavement up to where engineering says it has to be.
Correct.
And, and the, and the covenant release will be held in the engineering department till those conditions are satisfied.
Good enough.
Mr. McColdrick, can I ask though, the amount of the bond, is that based on bringing the, the roadway up to full pave?
So that amount is based on the entire, so that's the base pavement as well as top coat. So that's the full construction of the road is bonded at, or would be bonded at two hundred and sixty-eight.
Understood, okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, my cost is probably fifty thousand dollar worth of work left, but I'm willing to take the condition just to satisfy. And, and I would request that for next time meeting, we, we, we review it, it is, I don't want to have a dispute. There was one lot the board was asking and it was calculated.
It went on so long.
Yeah, yeah, no, it, it was.
I tell you the truth, I.
There were several mistakes done.
I tried to forget it.
No, no, it was two and was a mistake in the last meeting, if you hear the video, with the mistake was accepted that it was, it is one, but in reality, it's zero, in my opinion, and that's the lawyer I'm talking about.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
We can look at that.
I'm not going to be allowed seven homes in two months.
You're not going to get six building permits by the time of the sec, by the time of the next meeting anyhow.
No, it helped me prepare the lot.
Yeah, I get it, I understand.
Okay, so, could we have a motion?
So I move that we authorize the release of six lots at the Falcon Farm subdivision subject to the applicant providing a satisfactory surety passbook, whatever, in the amount of two hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars to the engineering department as well as bringing the roadway pavement in accordance with, also where does engineering is requesting? What was, what were they looking at?
Binder.
Binder coat.
Binder coat, to binder coat.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I just want to remind, there's six more lots because.
We've already closed the hearing.
We already did it.
We've already done.
I know, but I'm back in July. You didn't do someone more, so I just wanted to clarify.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next order of business is to discuss and vote on the bond release for Oak Meadows Farm subdivision.
Uh, so this is.
I'll accuse myself on this one.
Okay.
So this is a request for a bond release for the Oak Meadows Farm subdivision. Similarly, I've consulted with the engineering department. They request not a full release, but a reduction to one thousand five hundred. We still have the record drawing that needs to be completed, so it's just the as-built. And then we can release the remaining one thousand five hundred.
Okay, somebody make a motion?
I move that we release the bond for Oak Meadows Farm subdivision except for fifteen hundred dollars for the completion of.
Uh, the record drawing.
The record drawing.
Second.
Second, okay, any further discussion? Okay, if there's none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Vote, so voted, okay. Good, um, okay, next is to discuss the calendar for the rest of the year. Anybody have any issues with that?
Sorry, Mr. Chair, can we pull one out of order correspondence, just I, I know we have a.
I was, I was wondering why it's done, I was sitting here. Yeah, what, sure, Chris, what do you got?
So, yeah, so the, for correspondence, we did receive a letter, um, uh, from Mr. Jim Lamp. This is in regards to the Edgemere drive-in. The Edgeman drive-in, more specifically the Starbucks proposed that is currently being put in there. The original proposal in site plans that are approved do include a patio space there. The request is to add in a trellis and more specifically the, the foundations for the trellis. I believe that this can be handled as a field change, but in discussing this with the, the building inspector, we did want to, you know, make sure that this was something that the board was aware of and is comfortable having as a, a field change and not requiring additional de minimis or site plan modification for the proposed trellis. I've included the plans that were provided as well as the letter in the board's packet tonight, which includes some of the drawings, and I believe there's renderings that if. Thank you.
Ooh, nice, huh?
Uh, metal with wood on top.
This is it? Just the footings of this?
Yeah, and the pergola itself.
We just wanted to make sure Mr. Thomas went out with a bang on a huge.
I go drink my seventeen dollar coffee under one of these pergolas.
That's right, well, that's how you pay for the trellis.
Yeah, right.
So if I can give just while you're watching through that, just a little background. So when we permitted this, we've been back before the board several times on minor things. We actually permitted the Starbucks without a lease signed because Starbucks wanted to get going, but there was lease issues. We came back, we got an extra two hundred and forty square feet on a de minimis decision. We are delivering basically a, a cold shell to Starbucks and then they are going to move in sometime in June to do all the interior fit up. We're responsible for the patio, but Starbucks is responsible for the trellis. And in order for us to build the patio, we need to have these small footings put in for the trellis. And then we can build the patio and deliver the site. We're, we're kind of, it's one of these, you know, just an odd catch twenty-two. But I, I'm hoping that the board can defer to staff and the building department for us to work through the details on this and get the foundations in and move forward. And I appreciate being able to come before you on such short notice, we just found out about this earlier this week.
Yeah, so I do want to just mention, I think, some of the, the concern related to this and, and reason that we wanted to make sure the board was aware. In other situat, in other similar projects, we have had these outdoor spaces that subtly evolve through field changes and start to hit a threshold where it does really change the site. Not really seasonal seating, it gets more three season, I don't think we're there currently. But, but again, you know, trying to catch that early so, so that the board is aware of it, of those changes as well, but.
If you look deeper into your package, you can see kind of the trellis, there's a detail on the second sheet that shows the seating. Basically, it's twenty by ten, two trellises with a gap in between with, you know, unprotected seating. It, it's not there for the rain, it's really there for, for sun protection shading.
Were these on the original plan?
So, no, so the, the trellises and the, although it did include a patio space, it did not include the actual trellises and seating, it just was labeled as patio space.
It's all open though.
Yes, just for sun.
Yeah. So you just wanted to say yes or no?
I mean, I, in my opinion, this is just, should be a, a field change, it's not anything that's more than aesthetic, in my opinion. So it should be just a field change.
Agreed.
Yes. Need a vote?
Uh, no, given the board's direction, I think we can proceed with that, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Sorry I had to wait for a while.
Sorry to make you wait till the last one. Last man standing.
I'll come here for the last blade of grass. We've been working with the town, I mean, this project, I, I hope everybody's happy with it.
Beautiful.
Project is, I think it's been about five years.
Been wonderful, great project.
We're looking at as a huge success, I love the way it looks and I think it's really starting to change the feel of Route twenty. Heading in the right direction, so thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
So we just have to do the calendar.
Yep, so is anybody, everybody okay with the calendar?
So I'll, I'll just give a little background on that. So we have been allotted a day off in July, namely July third, which would have conflicted with the decision deadline, or, sorry, the application deadline. But the building would be closed, so we're just requesting to amend the calendar to accommodate that, moving it back to, so we've been, provided you with the revised calendar dates. Just pushes it back to the following Friday rather than that Monday and accommodates that.
We need to change it further right into the year, I'm sure we can discuss it, right? Further into the year, further.
Yeah, yes, yeah, at any time if we need to adjust the calendar.
You can always have a special too, if we need to. So I, I move that we adopt the planning board regular meeting schedule for the balance of the year as written.
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
And thank you for the day off.
Do we have old business?
Uh, no old business to address tonight.
Do we have any other correspondence?
Uh, no other correspondence to address tonight.
And so then.
I move that we conclude this evening's public hearings.
Second, second. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted?
Thank you.
Anything is adjourned?